Good evening, everybody. With it being approximately 6:30 on Tuesday, July 31st, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. It's exciting to see so many new faces, which I believe they're going to be introduced formally in a few minutes. Hope everyone is enjoying their summer up to this point. Moving on with the agenda, the first item is approval of the June 12, 2018 minutes. I just have a couple minor corrections. Under the Webster Women's Club Scholarship Approval, there were four members that approved it, not five. And under the motion to adjourn, there were four members having voted in the affirmative. Any other corrections or comments by the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Is the motion in a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the June 22, 2018 minutes. Again, I have a couple corrections on these as well. In the agenda item to approve the Webster Educators Association Contract, which is on the last page, if you could please indicate that I had recused myself. There is a difference between abstaining from the vote and recusing yourself. So if you just indicate at the top that I had recused myself from that item. And then the second correction I had is the next item, which was to approve the Unit B contract. I actually had abstained from that vote. So it would be four in the affirmative and one abstain. Any other comments or corrections regarding the June 26 minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Is the motion in a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Mrs. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to a new team of administrators. I'd like to introduce Peter Cushing. Dr. Peter Cushing is our new principal at the Bartlett High School. I would also like to introduce our new elementary school principal, Robin Parmley, and of course, Michael Zajak, the middle school principal. And I'd like to introduce Leanne Gillette as our new Dean of Students at the Webster Middle School and the Bartlett High School. And to officially welcome you into our district, I will be sending these down your way. And they say, "In Webster, kindness matters." We are delighted to have you join our team of administrators. Our goal here is to make sure that we're supporting our students and our teachers. And I believe you will be a wonderful addition to our team, each one of you. So welcome.
Mr. Zajak, who would have thought in your second year you'd have the most seniority? Let me just take a moment up on behalf of the entire committee and welcome all of you to Webster. I've had the chance of meeting two of you. We haven't had a chance to meet yet, but certainly, we welcome you. It's a very exciting time, as Mrs. Gogan indicated. I believe I've said this publicly. I know I said it to her privately. I personally, in the 10-plus years that I've been working closely with administrators in the school district, I think we have the strongest central office team that I've worked with over the last 10-plus years. And certainly, my hope and strong desire, and I think everybody else is, that same level of leadership and professionalism and work ethic will continue to occur on the building level. So again, on behalf of the committee, welcome. And we're very excited that you have joined us. Certainly, if any of you would like to make a few comments, you're more than willing to do so? All I ask is, I get yelled at if people don't talk into the microphone, so...
Well, I just want to thank you for that welcome. I'm very pleased to be here. One of the reasons that I came and made this decision was when I had met with your superintendent. I really was very inspired and impressed by the direction of where Webster is going and her vision. And so, thank you for welcoming me. And I'm very pleased to be part of the team.
Likewise, I want to thank you for welcoming me to the district. I too am very excited about, you know, seeing Bartlett rise, about the work that we're going to do for the moral imperative for our students. I believe that what we are doing at Bartlett is really going to help improve student outcomes and student futures. And I'm very excited to start meeting the students as they come in through August and into September for certain. So thank you very much. And I look forward to great things being a part of Webster.
Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't met anybody. So it's a pleasure to meet you. And thank you for the warm welcome. I look forward to being a part of the team in both schools and helping to move Bartlett into the future. It would be a great opportunity, and I look forward to it. I can't wait for the kids to come in. Thank you.
Any comments from the committee members? Hearing none, Mrs. Gogan?
Thank you. I know that you have an important dinner to go to. So I want to thank you for coming tonight.
Are these your special guests? Well, welcome. Thank you for sharing us, sharing her with us. Good luck with dinner.
See you tomorrow.
Have a good night.
Okay. I'm truly excited about our new team. And as we are, we have been working all summer long with planning. This leadership at the buildings is key. It's where the rubber hits the road. It's where the accountability is on the day-to-day measured. And so, I believe our mission this year will be advanced tremendously because of the clarity in the work that we are providing, the supports to our principals. And so, I'm delighted about to have this team. So thank you, guys, for coming here. So I have a long report. So I will try to go fast. I would like to give you some personnel updates that were in your packet. We have moved some people around. We have Jen Chartier going to be an ELL teacher at Park Ave Elementary School. We have hired Rene Harrington Freeman as the Adjustment Counselor at Park Ave Elementary School. We have hired Amy Palia as the Librarian at Park Ave Elementary School. We've hired Vanessa Hassett for Grade One Teacher at Park Ave Elementary School. We have moved Kelly Masonette to preschool. And we've moved Sherri Cody to a sub-separate preschool. We've moved Sue Michiki to a kindergarten special education classroom. And we've moved Amanda Whitman to Grade One Special Education. And Bonnie Hobokian Giuliano, we've transferred her to Grade Three Special Ed. And we've transferred Sally Connors to Grade Four Special Ed. And moved Nora Wormy to the Learning Center. At the middle school, we have hired Barbara Maglione, the Team Chair, and Amy Pinto for Grade Five. We have moved Alkeia Connerly from the Park Ave Elementary ELL position to the Bartlett High School ELL position. We have hired Brian Stretch for Technology. And we have given related service providers individual contracts. At this point in time... Oh, I have new hires from today. We have also hired at Bartlett High School, Leanne Corso for the Quest Program. And we have hired Deb Pushes. She'll be moving, she's one of our employees, to the Reading Specialist Position at Park Ave Elementary School. Unfortunately, we've received a number of paraprofessional resignations. We have received resignations from Kathy Kunkel, Joe Epstein, Thomas James, Linda Whalen, Richard Krensky, and Derek Prokarchuk. I would also, I'm just going to move along. Are there any questions on that? I would like to inform the school committee about our HR procedures and practices. We have been doing, I think, a great job in that area. Our procedures are basically the principals and directors and the superintendent chairs the committees. Our questions are developed collaboratively. And oftentimes, we use rubrics to rate different candidates. All committees, all committee members sign off on a confidentiality statement. We've been doing that in the central office. And we've shared that confidentiality statement now with the buildings. That's important because sometimes when people interview, they don't want their, they don't want their name out there. So we want to respect that. We don't make any names of our candidates public until they've, reference checks have happened and they become finalists in our district. And our onboard welcoming procedures for new hires include a one-on-one meeting with myself. I like to meet all new hires and acclimate them to the district, the district's vision, where we're going. Really encourage people to use their voice as new people coming into our district. I think anytime you come in from a different place, you get to see things a little differently. And so, we want to support people to share their ideas. They also meet with the Executive Administrative Assistant, with Lori Glennon, to review paperwork. They do their query checks and physicals and et cetera. And then, of course, they have ongoing meetings with the principals to acclimate them to their building, their classroom, and their curriculum. We host a new teacher staff orientation on August 22, which you're all invited to attend. That will be held in this room on August 22 at 8:00. And so, I wanted to give you an update. We've developed some new forms, a new checklist for our HR procedures with a hire sheet listing who you're calling for references so that we have sort of a paper trail on our hiring. I would like to let the school committee know that we did send out a notification to the unions regarding the Janus decision. And I would like to give you an update on federal grants. We have received our federal FY19 federal grant allocations. We have received $768,000 for Title I. For Title II-A, $81,000. For Title III, $21,000. There's been a decrease in, of about $17,000 for Title I and a decrease of about $34,000 in Title II-A. And Level III was level funded. For Title IV-A, there was an increase. We are now receiving $56,000. For Special Education IDA, we receive $663,000. That's an increase of about $6,000. And our early childhood grant is level funded at around $23,000. We work diligently in the summer to apply for grants. All of our grants have to have a clear purpose, what we're spending the money for. And the state looks through those applications with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that we're in compliance and we're using the grants for the money that we allocate, that we say we're using for it. I'm so pleased to tell you that we have, and which you already know, a dynamite food service director. She's written a grant. And we have received the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant in the tune of $41,000 for Park Ave Elementary School. And that's really going to help us continue our mission of feeding kids healthy foods. We, she has also received $6,850 from the Worcester County Commission's Foundation Grant for new equipment. She's going to be retrofitting existing steam tables so it can be used for a salad bar at the high school. And she is going to retrofit some current equipment for a sandwich line. I said that wrong. The salad bar is actually going to the middle school. And the sandwich bar is going to the high school. Ellen has also received some additional grant money from Project Bread this summer. And she will be using these funds to support an end-of-the-year summer Welcome Back Lunch, which we will host at North Village on August 24. This is something that we've been trying to do and trying to get out to different locations. Yesterday was a wonderful event with Congressman McGovern's Summer Meals Rock Tour. And it was great to see all the support that we have in the community to help feed our kids. We made some wonderful connections with the Webster Dudley Food Share. We are in the beginning phases of putting together, hopefully, a food pantry at the middle school and the high school where students will be allowed to take food home over the weekend that need it. And so, they're helping, they're helping us to do that. So that's all good news. On the instructional leadership side, I received a very important notification from the Department of Education. And we have been one of the lucky schools to be selected for a review and monitoring this year. This review focuses on six standards. It's like the old EQA. It's a very thorough review. It will be very time-consuming. A committee will come in and meet with people and look at our documents. And I have not heard anything from them since the initial response. And I will keep you apprised of that. On behalf of the high school, and just in the transition, I will give you an update on the Bartlett High School Rethinking School Discipline Report, which was submitted on June 29. Bartlett had been identified for having at least two of three years where we were suspending students of color and at a much higher incident rate. So because we were in that category, we were part of a program to figure out ways to decrease that. So the report, I didn't see in the packet, which I can get to you if it's not in your packet, really shows that there has been a reduction in the disciplinary incidents from 160 to 117, which is a 26% change. There was also a reduction in the number of incidents for African-American and Black students by 12%. The data also showed, and this is an area that we will be discussing as an administrative team, a large increase in the number of special education students who were being suspended. And that was increased by 12%. And the two main reasons for suspensions and disciplinary conducts were inappropriate language and defiance. On another positive note, we have applied and been accepted to the Mass SE Inclusive Tiered One Academy for Bartlett High School. This is a program of support where we will have trainers come in to help us with deepening our knowledge about Tier One interventions, particularly at the high school. And so, this is a wonderful opportunity. Dr. Christian Rodriguez and Katie Novak are known for doing this kind of work. And the Department of Education has hired them. And they're going to come in and work with us. I've yet to hear back from them. So we'll keep you apprised of that. I am really excited that we're building leadership through our teachers. For the very first time in this district, we met, we had a two-day summit in July with the instructional leadership teams at each of the buildings and the administrative team. And we, the first day, we worked with the DSAC team to really look at the turnaround plans at each of the schools so that the teachers were looking at and helping to create what the action plans are going to be. It's a work in progress. We want the teachers on the, that we're paying a stipend to be district department heads and instructional leaders to be more involved in the actions and the changes. And so, they have a seat at the table now. And the first day, we met as a big group. And then, we branched off into different schools. And we had a DSAC coach at each of the meetings and walk through what the plans looked like. And the idea is that those teachers will be bringing back information on a regular basis with their principals to the teachers at grade-level meetings, at department head meetings. And we'll be using data in a different fashion. So speaking of data, we also are rolling out a new district assessment tool this year, iReady Assessments. So they will be training specifically for the administrators and for the teachers as we learn to get some valid data with, you know, our new materials. So we want the teachers to be hand-in-hand with us on this. This is not a directive. We, teacher leadership is key to change, sustainable change in a district. Our second day was very interesting. And we began the conversation about unconscious biases and equity and how our own unconscious biases, without us knowing, interfere with sometimes, with the messages that we give kids without knowing that. So we began to talk about ways to be a little bit more reflective about our own practices and our unconscious biases in the work that we're going to be doing this year. So for example, when we meet at an SST meeting, which is a Student Success Team meeting, the conversation is, should include, are we shutting off this particular student for some reason? Are we doing something that may be closing the doors instead of opening the doors? So we're at the beginning phases of this. I'm very pleased to say that the district leadership team, ILT team, are all reading a book called Engaging the Rewired Brain, which is a book really focused on how kids think. Certainly, schools have changed. Technology has definitely changed with the way kids process information. And the book does provide us with some strategies, some easy-to-use strategies that may be helpful inside of our classrooms. So we'll let them come up with some new plans by reading that. Okay. I still have more. I'm pleased to tell you that the MSBA site visit is occurring on August 16 at 1:30. It is a senior site visit. It does not mean anything yet, but we're hoping for the best. I would like to give you an update on the annual Massachusetts Superintendent's Conference, which was very helpful. The theme of the year was redefining what success looks like for all students, pathways, opportunities, and resources. I gained a lot from hearing Dr. Tyrone Howard on developing culturally responsive schools, which kind of folded nicely with what we're trying to do here with the discussions about equity and reflection. There were, there was another presentation by Darnice Amante with regards to how we don't realize sometimes how our words can shut doors for kids. So that was particularly helpful. I did also make the, they had a kind of a funny thing going on at the superintendents conference. Paul Andrews is an older gentleman on the Mass Superintendent's Team. And they had this like, "Find Paul" kind of tweet. So people were taking pictures with Paul. And we found Paul, we found Paul. Well, I took a picture with Paul, of course, because now I am the master tweeter. And my picture happens to be on the MAS website. And I was delighted to have lunch with the commissioner that day. So it was a very successful conference. The summer's been really busy, really busy. And I, for the people that are watching, I'm just going to, you may know some of these things, but I want to make sure that the community knows. On July 19, the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education came and filmed a video about the farm-to-school program at Park Ave Elementary School, highlighting the food that we received from the Worcester Regional Food Hub. A lot of our students were in that. When we get a copy of it, we will share that. I don't have a copy yet. Yesterday, we, on July 19, we held a well-attended meet-and-greet for the new principal at Park Ave Elementary School. The staff came out in droves. And that was very positive. On July 30, which was yesterday, the Congressman McGovern's Summer Meals Rock Tour was phenomenal. I don't think there's another word to describe that. I think we're way ahead of the curve here in Webster on a lot of things. We have revised our mentor handbook this summer. Our mentor training was changed for new mentors. New this year, we're going to be providing support for second-year teachers. So that's something that we're proud of. I want to give a shout-out to Sean Harrington and our students who displayed their pictures of the O.J. Memorial Walks in the month of July at the Book Lovers Gourmet. Even though schools stop, some of our teachers still work. And I think it's really important to recognize dedication when you see it. And so, I want to give a shout-out to Sean Harrington for that and all of our students. I also want to let you know that this room has probably been filled more than any room in the district over the course of the summer. We've been doing a lot of training. The CPM math training has been ongoing with our Bartlett High School teachers. That's been really well-received by the teachers. It's a big shift in how we're teaching math. And I want to give a shout-out to Jill Champlain for really working hard with our teachers, building relationships, and getting them to a point where they feel safe enough to try something new. I do have the information on the math program and how we paid for the math program. I know at the last meeting, I did not have that in front of me. The CPM math program, we took $8,000 from the FY18 LEA budget for that. The Ready Math for the middle school, we took six, a little over $6,000 from the FY18 220E line. We took a little over $2,000 from the FY18 LEA budget and six, a little bit, $61,719 from the FY19 Curriculum Renewal Line. And for the elementary school, the, we took $88,000 from the Park Ave Turnaround Grant. I'm still not done. Thank you for your patience. I am pleased to let you know that today, there was a really wonderful opportunity planned by Lois Taylor for the Extended Day Program. She planned a, she hosted a family event that was at Price Chopper. Any family who came received a $15 gift card. And the purpose of the whole program was to teach families and students about good nutrition. So Price Chopper was welcomed however many families today, gave them a tour of the bakery. I really wish I could have gone. And fed them pizza. And talked a little bit about nutritional aspects of food. And I don't have any pictures yet from there, but hopefully, we can get some tweeted out and thank the Price Chopper for doing that. And lastly, I do want to thank Webster's McDonald's for donating 20% of their sales from July 14. We haven't received that yet. But I did want to let the school committee know what we would be using those funds for. We would be using them to assist families and students in need of assistance, to have special celebrations at the schools to recognize students for persistence and determination with learning, maybe a school-wide assembly or a special treat at lunch, or to support field trips and to increase hands-on learning. Really depends on how much money we get. So that's a broad avenue. I want to thank them for doing that for the Webster Public Schools. And finally, I would like to just remind you of two important dates. August 22, new teacher orientation, and August 27, the district opening day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gogan. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you. The enthusiasm and the energy with your update is really exciting. And there's a lot going on. I think there's a misconception that people who work in the schools have the summers off. I said misconception, right? And that's clearly not the case. And just hearing all the great things that are happening is really refreshing.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple. With regards to the grants, what is the fiscal year for the federal grants?
July. They're switching over. They're moving them through June 30. It was always starting September 1 through August 31. But now financially, they're kind of working from, they're trying to switch it from 7-1 to 6-30. So a Title I grant could potentially run 26 months.
Okay. This is the year that they're trying to go from 9-1 to 7-1?
Right. For instance, we didn't, we haven't received our financials for FY19 Title I yet. We probably won't be able to start spending that money We probably won't be able to start spending that money until September. But then, it'll run through June 30th, then it'll run the next fiscal year. So, the bookkeeping is running on a fiscal year like our budget now, but it's still kind of...
In between.
In between.
Because I, I think I asked, or spoke to Mrs. Gogan privately about this. I would just like to see if our FY20 budget process to include all of the grant programs. Because I think personally, I think it's important to see what shifts, if any, are occurring in the grant programs, whether it's staffing and/or programmatic. And although that money is not approved at town meeting, it's this committee's that still authorizes the expenditure of those monies through payroll and warrants. But I think it's important to include that in the FY20 budget process.
It was my plan to have a line to put in anticipated expenditures out of the grants for the next fiscal year.
But you must actually have a budget, I'm assuming for...
I have budgets for everything.
Because personally, I would just like to see some of that detail. For instance, in the Title I, that money is going to X number of positions in the buildings and X number of programs.
Yeah, and, and I would put that in an additional column. So, right now, you have an FY19 column. You would have your projection for FY20.
Right.
You would have a column for LEA and a column for grants. And I would combine the grants in that column, so you would know what comes out.
That'd be perfect, yeah.
That's on my agenda to do. So, as you can see from the decrease in Title I, it was about $17,000. We may not be filling one position.
Right.
So, tho, those are the shifts that happen. And we will keep you informed.
Okay.
They seem to, Title I is seeming to take some of their money from Title II-A, which is a teacher quality grant, and they're shifting it to other grants, like a Title IV grant. So, you might not, you might see a reduction in Title II-A, but then you see an increase in one of the other grants. And I think what they're really trying to do is, is put the staff focus back on the LEA budgets and kind of reshift how they want the money spent, you know, for professional development or growth or family engagement, whatever it is. So, they seem to be shifting their funds.
The DESI visit, is that random? Or is there any indication that we were identified for an assessment based on a concern that they might have?
We were just one of the lucky 16 schools, I think.
So, that's pure random? We shouldn't look into it any more than...
Actually, I actually, I'm looking forward to it. It will help me dig under the covers a little bit more. So, anytime you have an audit, you learn something more that you may not have already discovered. So, we got this.
Okay. And just to follow up on your comments, yesterday, you know, as a school committee member, honestly, as a citizen of Webster, I was incredibly proud of everything. Not only the way it was presented, but everything that's going on and what Ms. Nyland and her team are doing, and what Mrs. Mackay and everybody at Park Ave, that was an amazing event. And to get as many representatives, I mean, sometimes the politicians have to show up, but I was extremely impressed with the short amount of time I spent with the new commissioner. Very hopeful with regards to his background and sitting in that seat in a very difficult district and having empathy to what that means. But also, all of the other, both town-based agencies and nonprofits, as well as, I had no idea how complex the process is to try to get food to our kids in the summer. And it was extremely well-handled.
We made some great connections. You'll hear more about it. I'll, I'll have a surprise at some point.
Thank you for your report. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, if Mrs. Pransley doesn't object and the members don't object, I just want to take one item. Looks like we have a guest with us out of order, which I'm assuming he is here for Item A under New Business, which is the approval of memorandum of agreement, District Resource Officer. Am I making that correct assumption?
Yeah.
And welcome Deputy Chief Shaw to that's, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. So, Mrs. Gogan, I'm kind of throwing you a curveball, but...
That's fine. Hello, Deputy Shaw.
Hello, how are you?
Long time no see.
This is the third place I've been in a super, a school committee meeting, so this is like exciting.
We're excited to have you.
Oh, hey.
Thank you for coming.
No, no problem. Sorry for I was a few minutes late.
No problem.
Tried to walk out of the station, knew fire erupted.
No problem. There's been some changing in the regulations. And all school districts across the state are required to have a memorandum of agreement between the superintendent and the chief of police. I just so happen to want you guys to sign it as well. The regulations are listed in Section 27, Section 37P of Chapter 71. And they include an MOA that describes the mission statement and goals, the roles and responsibility of the SRO, the process for selecting the SRO, the mechanisms to incorporate the SRO into our environment, the training for the SRO, basically, an outline of what the job is and how we're going to share services. So, Deputy Shaw has, and I have worked together to produce that.
Yeah, so basically, it's a collaborative. We found some different ones out there and went over the, what was required. And we added a few things as well, just really to clearly define the roles and responsibilities of what the SRO is going to be doing. I think it's important to notice that it is an active document, so we can tweak it as we go. And if there's something we want to change, we can certainly do that as, as the years go on. And what I like about it is there is going to be a period where we set goals for the upcoming school year. And at the end of the school year, we'll sit down together and with the SRO and see if we achieve those goals. And if we didn't achieve them, why didn't we achieve them? What can we do better? What do we want to change for next year? So, it opens up those lines of communication, which are already there. But I, I don't think it's something that you can never have enough of, is communication between agencies. It's one thing we've really started to do better the last few years in the town. And, and I see that getting better as we go forward. So, we sat down, we wrote this out, sat down with the superintendent and, and the business manager, and came to an agreement. I think we have a pretty good document here. And I think it's, it's pretty, pretty encompassing. And it has all, all the things that we need to have in there as far as what's required by the new law that was supposed to be enacted in, in July 13th, I think was the date. We set this to go forward August 1st. But it's, I, I think it's good. It gives the SRO clear-cut way of where he's, what he's going to do as far as, as, as the SRO, as the SRO. And as well as the staff, as they know what to expect from him as well, which I think is important.
I just want to add that we already have a great working relationship with the Webster Police. And we meet monthly. We have a district safety meeting where the police come and the fire and the EMT and all the administrators come. We're actually meeting on August 16th to go over our school safety plans and emergency preparedness before school starts. And they're always there. You guys are always there when we need you, and we appreciate that.
And, and I, this is a great, like, I work with a lot of other police departments and a lot of other capacities. And the relationship we have with the schools, since I've been in the administration business for the last five or six years, has only gotten better, and I think it's fantastic. And you really don't see this in a lot of other places. You don't see the collaboration between the schools and the police. It's a lot of this. That's all I heard about, you know, when I was early on in my academy, in, in the career and from other people that, you know, they're always fighting with the schools. But we don't have that here. We have a great relationship, and I look forward to we continue.
I'm just filled with news tonight. We also have, as you know, our teachers are coming back on August 27th, 28th, and 29th. We have all of our PD planned. Part of our PD this year will be to do some ALICE training, actual scenarios at each of the schools. So, that requires our SRO, Tim Whiting, to really organize that. And we will be bringing in a number of police officers. Maybe not all from Webster.
No, they're not.
And so, that's exciting to get to the point where we're actually doing the scenario training. And so, we've been collaborating on safety, and we will continue to. Another thing that we're doing new this year, I should just go home, right? Did I go? Were you going to do that? All right, I'm not going to say anymore.
You sure?
Yeah, I have to.
No, I'm talking about the emergency buckets.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, good. The emergency buckets. We have, are putting together emergency buckets. We could do like a show.
I know, right?
Emergency buckets for all the classrooms. And that's, you know, part of the ALICE training. I'll stop.
Sure.
I'm having fun tonight.
Any questions or comments from the committee for either Superintendent Gogan or Deputy Shaw? Mr. Chenery?
Just again, say thank you for everybody. You know, it's, it's, as you said, it's not something you see in other towns. And, you know, we take pride in the fact that we work so well, not only with the police department, but the other departments. And just for clarification for those watching, this isn't really changing anything. This is just clarifying duties and responsibilities. And Officer Whiting is still be the SRO.
Yes, yes, he will.
So, there'll be no change. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the School Resource Officer, which, for the record and the agenda, it indicates District Resource Officer, but I believe people could tell still what the topic was. So, I don't have an issue with approving the MOA for School Resource Officer.
Moved.
Is the motion in a second? Any further discussion? Let me just say, I've said to you privately, Deputy Shaw, how many compliments I receive of Officer Whiting and what an amazing job, not only your whole department does, but he does specifically with the administrators and the kids in the district. So...
Thank you.
As I've said, they were very big shoes to fill.
Yes, they were.
But he's done an excellent job filling those, so, thank you. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much, and come join us anytime.
And happy birthday.
Thank you very much. You had to let it out of the bag, man.
Can we sing?
I'll let you sing, I'm not...
Only if he stays and leads. Next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Pransley.
Good evening, thank you. What I have on the agenda tonight is the FY18 budget closeout. We have been working hard trying to close out the LEA budget for FY18. I tried to approach things a little bit differently this year with, with you. What I have is, I exported out of Munis instead of just giving you the Munis report. It's kind of hard to highlight things and make notes for you. So, what I did was exported it into Excel, so I could add a column and make notes and go through and highlight things. I will just go through, if you want, some of the highlighted areas where we have seen some either decreases or increases this year. Overall, it was a very good year for the school department. We saw a lot of savings in salary adjustments and utilities. I'm pleased to say that we didn't have to take any additional circuit breaker funds, and we did not have to use our school choice funds for this year. So, we did see a lot of cost savings through the year. Remember that when you were looking at this budget, the original appropriation is what was decided back in February of the prior year. So, as the school year hits, you know, you're deciding a budget in February, March. It goes through the process. We start the school year. There's a lot of staff turnover, positions changing, grants changing. As Mr. Herten said, what we typically do when our budget with grants is that in February, we kind of level fund our grants, hoping that we maintain the same level for the next year. It doesn't always work that way. Sometimes when they come in, we get a little less and we have to adjust. Sometimes we get a little more. And then, we also have to take a look at, sometimes we might have a teacher quality grant, and we were using it for certain staff member. And then, we reevaluate when the grant comes in and we use it for others. So, there's some shifting between the lines. It always goes to salary, but it might, you might, it might have been for grade one, but you'll see an adjustment in grade one. Maybe a grade four teacher came out someplace. So, we look at class size and stuff before we apply the grants. So, if you have any questions along the way, just stop me. I'm just going to point out some highlighted areas and some of the notes that I have. You can see where the very first line, Lunch Monitors, we had a zero appropriation. That was something we came to, Park Ave came and asked for additional money for. They didn't fill a power position, so that funded this position. You'll notice I transferred 20, 21,000 in. And I think that model was pretty successful at Park Ave without having to use the staff. We had specialists. We had a partial vacancy for part of the year, so the staff was out filling in a special education role for a little bit. So, she was not in the academic specialist position, so we had some extra funds there. And other teacher, we had some extra funds there. Somebody was out on maternity, and they didn't have sick time, so they were on unpaid leave. Some of these areas, you'll see, we might have some savings there, but then that would increase our sublines when you hear things like that. If you look at Paris, we saw some savings there. There were some grant adjustments and salary adjustments. This is an area that always changes every year. It's kind of difficult to budget. We pretty much just take the dollar amount and put some in the school. And then, as the year starts, it shifts. We work with special education because the roles switch. You know, you might have kindergarten Paris who now becomes special ed Paris. So, there's some, you know, what is it? Reclassification maybe of paraprofessional duties. And so, we can't fund a paraprofessional that might be in a kindergarten class out of the special education grant, so we have to shift that money around. As, if you keep going down, you'll notice a grade one teacher, there was an adjustment there because of the teacher quality grant. So, we added, we had to increase some funds there. Going down to grade three, you see a decrease there because of teacher quality. There were some adjustments with a new hire for a grade four teacher. Scrolling down to principals' lines on the bottom of the page, there were some salary adjustments there. And the assistant principal and clerical, that would have been the dean of students and the assistant principal. It didn't go filled for a little while, so we had some salary adjustments there. Same thing with the clerical position. That position was filled from an old position, so the salary was less than what we were probably paying somebody on the high end of the scale. There was some switching of money. You'll notice on the very bottom of the page, just between lines, that was for Alexia Software. You'll see on the second page, Adjustment Counselor, $56,000 increase here. That's because there was a transfer over to middle school. You'll notice Special Ed, there were some salary adjustments. And we can go through, you know, I don't know if you want me to keep going through all the lines. I think some of the big ones to point out were electricity. If you take a look at electricity at Park Ave, it shows that we had to transfer in $69,000. So, the, the balance of that account, we budgeted $124,000 and we ended up spending $193,000. We are waiting for our net metering credits to come online. We met finally around March with the town administrator to try and, try and get a handle on the net metering credits for the town in reallocating some of the percentages. So, we've worked it out. We filled out a new Schedule Z, which you're only allowed to do twice a year, and to reallocate some of those funds. So, this year, I'm expecting to see credits come online. You'll notice, if you look at some of the other schools as we get there, the high school, you, we saw significant savings at some of their lines and utilities because they were getting a larger amount of credits. So, we're just trying to shift them, so they're hitting the appropriate accounts and, and also getting on track with the billing. Because sometimes you might, you have to buy credits to get credits, if that makes sense. So, you're paying for them. And the billing on that can sometimes be four or five months behind. So...
On our end or on credit end?
On their end.
On their?
On their end. So, sometimes you surprise $30,000 bill. You try, as you're just learning to get a handle on what it's actually costing you and how it's working, because it's all based on consumption, what you're using. So, so overall, on Park Ave, it was a pretty clean budget. If you look at the middle school, as we head into the middle school, their budget was very good. Their sublines were excellent. There weren't too many changes going on. You'll notice there was a power vacancy that wasn't filled at the middle school. We had an adjustment with a grade six teacher. We had dropped down in the budget to five, sixth grade, because one was moved to fifth grade. There was that switch, that one-year switch. And we had a special ed teacher going over. You'll notice there's a decrease in the counselor because that position moved over to Park Ave. There was an increase that I just said in special ed. That was for the inclusion, the grade five, the shift in that position. And then, we seen a big salary savings in science. And that was the STEM teacher. We replaced that with a long-term sub. And then, again, we seen some utility savings in electricity for $23,000 with our net metering credits. I want to point out the building maintenance account at the middle school. We are starting to see items fail. The building was built in 2005. We're seeing, you know, a lot, some mechanical issues. We also had some alarm issues this year with some underground wiring that was expensive to fix. Uni vents are expensive to fix. He's seeing about eight fail a year that we're replacing motors and stuff on that. We're also looking at a repair for our IT room. The air conditioning's not working in there, and that's one room that really needs to be air-conditioned. So, that might be a costly repair. But it's, the building's starting, you know, things aren't made to last anymore, not like in the old days. They, you know, you tell them it's 10, 15 years old. They say, well, you're getting your good use out of it. So, you know, it's just an area that we need to watch. And we need to look at maintaining and, you know, trying to stay ahead of, ahead of things over there. And buying duct tape, yeah, right. So, those are some key... So, those are some key areas there. At the high school, the first page isn't, um, too much. We did see some large savings in the high school specialties. There were some salary adjustments and vacancies over there. And then, other than that, it wasn't crazy at the high school, um, as far as items unless, until you get down to their maintenance. If you look at their maintenance, you will see, um, custodians, we were over this year. That's because we had a long-term absence of one of our custodians, but we needed to fill that with a sub. So we saw, um, we needed additional money in salary. But if you look at electricity at the high school, you'll see there was a seventy-five thousand dollar savings in electricity at the high school. We saw twenty-six thousand dollars in savings in heating. If you look at our building maintenance, we had to transfer thirty-five thousand additional dollars in. Uh, we are seeing a lot of things fail over at the high school. A lot of problems with our boilers, we're having a lot of leaking, we're having a lot of mechanical issues. One of our pipes, I know, started dripping in one of the main hallways, and that was patched. That could be a major to fix. We're kind of waiting on that. The only way to fix it is to shut off the water to the whole building, um, at the road. They don't have shut offs in certain sections, and they're afraid to touch the shut off in the mechanical room because it is so rusted that they were afraid. So I'm having them look at that, getting prices to see if we can fix that and, um, but things are really, so we're, roof leaks have been crazy this year with a lot of roof leaks. So it's just, we're putting Band-Aids everywhere we can. I'm looking forward to the MSBA coming out, cause I think it's important that they hear about all the needs in the buildings, because, um, this is only gonna get worse. You know, we can only patch things for so long before we have a failure or something. Yeah, so, uh, that, that's a serious issue, and I think it's something that we need to keep in mind. So if you wanna jump down to special ed, we did see, um, this is an area that we watched, and thank goodness that we had all the utility savings and salary savings, because we were able to pick up the deficit without touching any additional money. We saw a three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollar deficit in special education. So that's in tuition costs. So that is a real, uh, area that we need to focus on and pay attention to and evaluate and, um, keep, keep tabs on, uh, between, and, and we also saw an additional increase on a hundred thousand dollars in contracted services. So those two areas alone, um, it's huge that we really need to monitor, and we have a plan in place to really monitor those expenditures and meet on a monthly basis, take a look at those items. Because I don't think that we're gonna be as fortunate to be able to pick up
Right.
in the future. So, if you keep looking down through the page, I've just highlighted some other areas. Nothing too crazy. We did, uh, transfer in to technology a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, part of that is the E-rate funding, fifty thousand for E-rate, uh, that we get that comes off of our other lines that we move in, and that is for Chromebooks for grades five through nine. We've been purchasing Chromebooks. Our plan moving forward is to look at school choice for those, um, to purchase, to get on an annual rotation for that.
So you were able to replace the Chromebooks for those four grades?
For grades five and for grades nine. And then we bought Chromebooks for grades K and one, not for every student. We're replacing the tablets. The tablets that the kids were using
Right.
are outdated, so we purchased, um, touchscreen Chromebooks. So the kids will, so we can manage them better, and those will be replacing the tablets.
Would it be fair to say that the guesstimate maintenance cost moving forward is about a hundred grand a year as a replacement strategy for all the?
For Chromebooks, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause our plan, and so far our plan is for Chromebooks, if we can get the four years out of them, we're just working our way through that cycle. Typically, when the kids graduate, those come back, we use them for loners and replacements and parts if needed, uh, depending on their shape. We get new ones for the kids coming in, and they have them for the four years. So we're, we're gonna see, we're in our third year, we'll see if we get a fourth year out of them coming up. And then we are, we're also gonna have to really take a look, and we've been working with, um, uh, John in IT as coming up with a replacement plan for our regular devices. Uh, all our teacher computers, all our admin computers, our recycle plan throughout. Um, we have many computer labs here with, you know, Apples in them. It's not just the Chromebooks that the kids are using, there's digital labs and stuff, so we wanna get on a real, uh, replacement plan. So we're looking at a four-year replacement plan for some of those, which is gonna add to that. But I think that's something that we need, you know, the town should be looking at also, and we should be looking, you know, at capital expenditures for that.
Which is how we got the Chromebooks in the first place?
Correct.
Through town meeting.
Correct. So overall, um, we did really well with the budget. We still have a balance of forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents left. I am recommending, uh, to the school committee, I've spoke with Superintendent Gogan, I think it's a good idea to return the funds to the town. Um, we have, uh, like I said, we didn't touch our school choice money this year, and we didn't have to dig in to our budgeted circuit breaker. We spent what was budgeted. Uh, when we were going through the process and looking at our FY19 budget, the town was, um, generous in allowing us, when we said we wanted to add safety to the building, and that was a serious concern, they didn't hesitate to add another forty thousand dollars to our budget. So I think, um, I think returning the money and keeping in mind our future, you know, FY20 budget season, we know is gonna be difficult. Twenty-one is gonna be difficult, and I think we need to work as a team. So I would recommend to return that money to the town.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Um, let me just state the obvious, cause I'm kinda good at that. Obviously, thank you to you and all the administrators, because, um, it's not easy, as you indicated, coming up with a budget in February and then trying to figure out what the cost. And even though there may be significant line item transfers, from my perspective, it's the bottom line, and I know everybody worked very hard during the fiscal year to make sure that not only are our students getting what they need, but we're also managing the taxpayers' dollars, both state, federal, and local, because that's a critical component of what we're asked to do. So, um, thank you very much. Do you need a formal motion, assuming the committee agrees on that? Is there any objection to, I happen to agree with Mrs. Perangeli about transferring the additional monies back to the town? Is there any disagreement amongst members or discussion regarding that?
No, just a comment. You know, I think you could say coming in under budget is, is something, right? But making all of the changes that have been made over the past year have also been really something. And to do both of those things in the same year is really remarkable. Thank you, I'm really proud to be a part of what's happening here.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to transfer forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents back to the town.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Having nothing under old business, we will continue with new business. The next item under new business is to appoint a designated to the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative, as the committee will probably remember, under section twenty, section twenty-seven of section thirty-seven P of chapter seventy-one. Oh, no, I'm reading the wrong one, never mind. As outlined in MGL chapter forty, section four E, school committees must annually appoint a designated education collaboratives. In the past, the committee has appointed the superintendent, unless she disagrees, which we won't let her. I will entertain a motion to appoint Mrs. Gogan as our representative to the central, I'm sorry, to the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Oh, I need a second.
A second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, next item on the agenda is appoint designated to the Central Massachusetts Collaborative. Again, as outlined in Mass General Law, chapter forty, section forty E, school committees must annually appoint a designated to the educational collaboratives. Again, I would recommend and ask for a motion to appoint Mrs. Gogan as our representative to the Central Massachusetts Collaborative.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of four thousand, four-hundred-seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents from the Webster Education Foundation. Mrs. Gogan.
I am now speaking into the microphone. I would like to ask the school committee to, um, accept this donation. As you can see, a hundred and twenty-seven is going to Amanda Anderson for grade one for Apple Magic Track Pad Two, um, and two thousand, nine hundred and, um, wow, there's a couple extra zeros in there. Uh, two thousand, nine hundred dollars, um, is granted to Amanda Anderson in grade one for social, emotional, classroom library supplies. That is a wrong number. Seven hundred is going to Kurt D. R. Langio, the science teacher, for telescope and astronomical supplies. And one thousand is going to Marian Honig for a business class field trip. Again, I would publicly like to just thank the community support for our schools. We are very lucky. In Webster, kindness matters.
Now you know why the students call him Mister D.
Yes.
The science teacher at Bartlett.
I can't say that.
Any questions or comments from the committee? To reiterate to, again, on behalf of the committee, I wanna thank all the volunteers that are associated with the Webster Education Foundation who work very hard in conjunction with the community in raising the funds that we can grant these wonderful projects with our staff. I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of four thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents from the Webster Education Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of Bartlett High School Handbook. Mrs. Gogan.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Dr. Peter Cushing to speak about the additions to the Bartlett High School Handbook. You do have a cover page, um, listed with all of the changes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again. Um, so the, I took over the document right around July first. The document itself has a number of formatting challenges, just because, as with handbooks that are edited over years, um, things are added upon and added upon and added upon. So this year, FY19, we'll see a comprehensive overhaul of the handbook and a transition to Google Docs, um, so that it can be a cleaner document. You'll notice that there's still some formatting that needs to be worked on, some things out of alignment, but when you're using track changes in Microsoft Word, um, there are just some challenges that will be touched up. For example, I couldn't delete the, despite my vast experience with Microsoft Word, I couldn't delete the cover page, um, for whatever reason. And so we'll be working, obviously, to get that updated with the appropriate years. So there is one change that was only noticed, uh, this morning that needed to be made, and that's to bring the document on page fourteen into alignment with the approved program of studies. And that's reducing the number of credits needed for health from ten to five, and moving those five credits into the elective, uh, portion. So that will increase from twenty-two point five credits to twenty-seven point five credits. But that was not noticed until today, so I apologize for that, but we will be, uh, making that adjustment. Uh, the handbook, throughout, we, uh, we changed, um, I really should add guardians anywhere there's a place for parents, so we made that change. Inside the cover, district leadership and school leadership individuals and roles were updated. Page two, the title box had not been updated in several years. It was still listing, I think, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, possibly twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So we made that change. Page eleven, um, the introductory paragraph was changed for syntax. There were a lot of syntax and grammar things that were looked at. Uh, page thirteen, under graduation requirements, changed the word administration to the principal or the principal's designee. That was also changed numerous places throughout the document. Page fourteen, under MCAS requirements, simply added the sentence, "In the coming years, the terms surrounding MCAS will be changing," because they will be. Page eighteen, edited the notice of suspension, uh, to change there. I leave it to you to read, I don't wanna, uh, read the entire document. We updated, um, emergency removal, uh, to substantially fall within the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, uh, chapter thirty-seven H, H and a half, and H and three-quarters, uh, to make sure that our discipline regulate, our discipline regulations are in line with state law. Pages eighteen and nineteen, under number three for suspension, uh, this is once again something that is mandated by law now, as of twenty fourteen. Parents will receive both oral and written notification, the suspension, students will have the right to have a hearing with a parent or guardian present. Notification will include the following items that you can read there as well. Um, page nineteen, we edited the after suspensions. Basically, the, the update there, um, is to change that a meeting will be scheduled. We will not rely on parents and guardians calling. That's, that should be incumbent upon the school district. Uh, we deleted, uh, several items, um, that I found to be interesting that they are in a handbook, uh, that in the case of violation, we may convene a team to, for further disciplinary action, which may include expulsion. That's not approved by law. Expulsion is a very specific thing that can only happen for a small number of infractions, including but not limited to drugs, weapons, assault of a staff member. There is a point in here, um, and I'll get to it, but where it said that a student could be expelled for assaulting a student, that is not true under law. Page twenty, we edited the school possesses a breathalyzer, which will be utilized with probable cause or suspicion. Uh, school districts and schools do not need probable cause, we need what is known as reasonable suspicion. So we may, I edited that and, uh, simply edited down to say the school possesses a breathalyzer, which will be utilized. Page twenty, added, uh, and all the subjections contained therein. Page twenty, we deleted the following section, as these are, basically, this is kinda the recipe for building a handbook, so it doesn't need to be in the handbook itself. It would be like going to a restaurant, and on the menu, they have the recipe for their key lime pie. So we don't, we don't need that. What we need is, is to have these things in there. So that was deleted. Page twenty-one, sorry, page twenty-one, we added the following, "Bullet, principal shall, has the ultimate authority to determine if an object is or is not a weapon." Uh, this is something that is under law, once again, the principal's authority. Deleted school administration, and once again replaced with principal or principal's designee on bullet four. Pages twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, abbreviations were expanded, syntax changed in some areas for ease of reading and accuracy. Page twenty-eight, we edited assault and attack, this is what I mentioned earlier. Uh, it's assault on a staff member or, or teacher. Page twenty-eight, principal may also exclude students from school, uh, was, was changed to read, "The principal may also exclude students from school for a psychological examination, follow-up consult, counseling, and recommendation of the psychologist, uh, that the student can return to school. The school will be required to provide resources to, for the student can make academic progress." Um, that would fall more likely under, uh, home hospitalization. Uh, page twenty-nine, uh, deleted walk bands. I, I don't think that needs any explanation. Uh, page thirty-eight, uh, we added the following to the fundraiser, "Pile approval must be retained, uh, first from the building principal and then the superintendent of schools." Page seventy-two, we added the AHRRA notification for asbestos. And finally, on page seventy-three, the FY19 calendar will be added. That's just a formatting piece, which is why it's not in there right now. But I do wanna say that there will be, I've reviewed and edited two handbooks previously. Uh, this is the law of the school. The handbook is the law of the school, once approved, uh, by the school committee. It, it is legally binding, and there will be a comprehensive, committee-driven approach to making sure that this handbook is fully within, uh, its rights and legal bounds this coming year, and we will make sure that it is, uh, well updated moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? I have two comments slash questions, and I know you've been here a total of thirty-one days. Um, and these are issues I believe I've raised with the- And these are issues I believe I've raised with the previous administration. The first one has to do with cellphone policy. I understand the intent that if a student is using a cellphone in a class, they're not paying attention to what's going on. The current handbook, as it has been for years, eliminates any, or prohibits any use of cellphone throughout the day. I'm wondering, because I've talked to a lot of teachers and administrators in other high schools, both in Massachusetts and Connecticut, and some of them, to try to deal with the intense discipline issue related to that topic, have allowed cellphones to be used at times during the days, either between classes or at lunch. Because I would guess if somebody asked all of us sitting around this table not to use your cellphone for six or seven hours a day, in a day, it would be very difficult to do. What is your thought on considering amending the cellphone policy where it's not just strictly not using it? Because the other thing I was surprised, when I was looking at the discipline report, I think there were eight suspensions related to, now, it's technology. You don't know if it's cellphone use or not, but I'm guessing a lot of those have to do with cellphones. And as a parent, first of all, I would expect my children to follow the rules, and they would be disciplined if they don't. But for a child to be suspended over using cellphones, to me, may add to some of the issues we have related to graduation rates and dropout rates and testing scores, et cetera. So, I'm curious what your view is on that particular topic.
So, it's interesting, because research actually just came out in the last few days about cellphones affecting student learning. I think one of the things is to really understand that are there opportunities that students can use their cellphone appropriately in school that will not distract from learning? So, lunch, study halls, transitions in class, transitions between classes, those types of things. What I'd really like to do is I'd like to talk to the students and the faculty and staff about it. Because I've seen in my previous school district where, basically, it was just taken off completely, the restrictions. It impacted student interactions in the hallways. Students would be listening to music rather than interacting with peers. And there were, I would say, not data-driven, but empirical looks at the high school where this happened, of students not being as engaged. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to really look at, what is a good way that we can amend this? All right? So that we're not causing problems? Because we, as adults, if we are going to fight a fight that's going to lead a student to suspension, then we, as adults, are causing the problem. And so, we need to look at ways to modify our behavior and to really look at our interactions with students and to remove those impediments. And I think student voice in those conversations is really important. And I believe that our students at the high school level should be able to have those conversations and understand where faculty and staff are coming from, but also understanding where students want to go. So, I have no problem looking at it to amend it and making sure that it's something that really is in line with what the research says and what's going to be the best for students. Now, that's both in an academic side and a discipline side.
Because, as you say, the handbook does become the rule, the law of the school.
Right.
And as I read it now, it says, "Fifth and subsequent offenses, the student will receive progressive days of suspension." Would you be opposed to amending that this evening to add, based on the approval of the principal or designee?
Yeah, I guess I do not have a problem doing that, because I have a problem suspending. That was something that caught my eye. But without, so, the way a handbook is supposed to be reviewed is with a school site council in multiple iterations. And so, I was treading lightly and sticking to what I know are violations of law, like expelling a student for assault on another student.
Right.
Can't happen. As you may think that's right or wrong, it just, under law, can't happen. So, I don't have a problem amending that right now. And to even removing that fifth and subsequent. The way I did it in my previous district was the student wouldn't be allowed to enter the building unless he or she turned in the device, if it's becoming that much of a problem. But I don't have a problem looking at this policy for, this, I'm sorry, procedure, not policy, further.
One of the things that has been challenging, you just started in July, and the task of bringing these handbooks was pushed up. Typically, they're not presented until August, and at that point, it's the two days before school starts. So, we pushed this up. We want to, as a collaborative administrative team, take a look at all of our handbooks. We need to build consistency and the same type of communication across the board. So, the use of cellphones at the high school does impact the use of cellphones at the middle school, which eventually, you know, you might be in third grade and getting a cellphone in two years from now, the way technology works. There is some research out there that says that kids really need a break from technology. And that's the premise of the book that we're reading, Engaging the Rewired Brain. It is truly important for kids, especially in poverty-stricken areas, that they get that break, that they have to actually write for a long period of time during any day, that they're getting physical activity. And so, we do need, as a bigger, larger team, to have this conversation about the use of cellphones. I do agree with you, to suspend a student for not handing in a cellphone is a little outrageous. And I don't see an issue with that. I don't think you're going to see that kind of suspension under Peter Cushing's leadership. But I do want to ask the school committee to give us some time, give Peter some time, to acclimate to the building, to see what's going on, to see how the code of conduct is actually being lived at the school, to see what real changes need to be made. And again, it is the responsibility of the school council in conjunction with the leadership team. And one of the things that I've tasked all the principals this year is to actually develop a strong school council where they're looking at not only the handbook, but the budget. So, they're getting voices from other people. Teachers, community members, parents are on those school councils. So, you know, we push the envelope to get these handbooks ready in such a quick time that we all know that not all the changes that we wanted to make are in here. One of the most important changes that Peter did highlight has to do with discipline. We have to meet the laws. And the laws have changed. The police have just informed me that we used to have what I would call the wild card, the aces in our pocket, as a building principal. If a student was disturbing school assembly, you could suspend them. So, the principal had the authority to decide what that disturbing school assembly could be. And kids could actually get arrested for those types of things. The police can no longer arrest an elementary or secondary student. They can arrest them, but they cannot be found delinquent for disorderly conduct or disturbing the peace or interrupting an assembly. So, there's a little bit of a catch-22 going on with the laws and what rights principals have to suspend kids. We want to make sure that we're in compliance with all of those. But that wild card, that the authority of the principal has been compromised a little bit.
I do also want to highlight, if you look on page 2, the bottom of page 2, or it says, "Page 19 deleted." There were certain things that fundamentally violated my core values that needed to be deleted for me to serve as the leader of Bartlett. And so, under page 19 deleted, the third bullet down, "At-risk students who continue to demonstrate a lack of academic success, attendance progress, and/or discipline problems will be referred to an alternative education program." So, I get why that was written, and I don't want to criticize anyone who wrote that. But that seems to me that we're passing on a student in need to someone else, rather than further trying to find the solution to help that child and to really own, to have that responsibility. And an alternative program may eventually happen, all right? But it should not be listed in our handbook that that is what our outcome is. And it just seemed to be a very abrupt thing. And you can see in those deletions, I think, who I am as a person and the core values that I bring. And while there were certain things in there that probably should have been left to a school site council, being charged with looking at this handbook, there were certain things, as I was sitting on vacation in Gloucester with my family, that I just could not see being a part of a school under my leadership.
And again, don't get me wrong, I understand you've been here for a month, and this process was expedited. And I'm not raising these concerns to be critical. I just wanted to express, since we're being asked to approve it this evening, express a couple of concerns that I've shared with previous administrators.
I'm very open to changing it, just so you know.
Okay. The other area, and hopefully, you probably will look at it as you go through your process this year, the other component that has bothered me for many years is the 10-point deduction for students that have five or more unexcused absences. Again, I understand the intent. The intent is, we need you to be in school, and if you're not in school, we're going to punish you. The concern I have is, my guess is, the students that are struggling to be in school are lacking self-motivation. They don't have a lot of support at home. They, unfortunately, at times, probably come from very dysfunctional families. So, if I'm one of those kids, and I'm having a hard time in school, and I'm out five days or more and a quarter, and my grade was a 65 or 70, and now my grade may be a 55 or 60, why am I going to come back to school? And so, again, I understand your approach, and based on your nodding your head, you will look at that. But I just wanted, for the record...
It's not even that I'll look at it. It's people have mentioned that in my time here, and I've had to bite my tongue, because it is not something that, it's not something that I agree with. So, I need to investigate it. I know in other schools, what they'll do is they'll actually take away credit, but they'll leave the grade. And what kids can do, what students can do, is they can earn credit back by coming for days over February or April vacation, or Saturday sessions, or Christmas vacation, or whatever it may be, that students can earn that credit back. You may say, "Well, a student with an attendance problem, are they going to come on those days?" I have seen success with that before, and it doesn't set that child up in the way you said of, "Well, now I get a 55." "I'm struggling to maintain a 65, and now I get a 55." So, I definitely hear you on that point as well, and it's something that I definitely want to look at. And not just look at, but to move towards something else.
Okay. Yes.
If I may, I'd like to make the recommendation that you take that out.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think it's fair to kids who are struggling.
Those are the questions I had. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Without any additional comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the Bartlett High School Handbook, removing the 10-point reduction for missing five days or more unexcused, as well as amending the cellphone suspension to indicate per principal approval, or designee, if I'm getting that correctly.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And by the way, I appreciate your initial views towards school and discipline, and it's very refreshing to me personally, so.
Well, I appreciate that. I'll tell you, the one area that I really wanted to dig in and go was the academic integrity policy. It's interesting, it's only about a paragraph long. And I worked to put in a nearly two-page, really detailing what academic integrity is. And I think that's something that is fundamentally important, especially for our students going on to college. And we talked a little bit about technology, and students today not fully comprehending what plagiarism and academic forgery and academic theft actually are. And I look forward to working with people on that as well.
Well, again, thank you for your effort on vacation and the other three weeks that you were here. There's been a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Webster Middle School Handbook.
Good evening.
Say, Jack, how are you?
Good, good. It's been a busy summer. A lot of the changes for our handbook is taking out the standards-based grading and a lot of the practices for that and converting back to the letter grades. So, going through the list of changes, and I did have some edits to this, is just redesigned and alignment of the cover page was addition of the table of contents page. I felt that was helpful for parents to identify areas in the handbook. Updated, page 1, updated names, district school committee, administration, making sure titles are correct. Wanted correction, page 3, we updated the breakfast program. Next year, we will be serving breakfast in homerooms, whereas in the past, students were not...
Really? So, you're doing a breakfast in the classroom?
Yes, we are.
Wow.
So, to make adjustments to that, students, traditionally, have been coming into the cafeteria at 7:10. Starting next year, they'll be coming in at 7:20. So, I'd had to adjust the time. They'll have breakfast in their homerooms from 7:20 to 7:35, and teachers will be there to supervise. I did visit a middle school with my head custodian, Ellen Nyland, to view the functionality of it, and I was very impressed with the system. I've been in communication with Ellen in regards to how it's going to work. She's actually composing a grant right now to help facilitate this. We've designated a location in the building in close proximity to the cafeteria for storage of these items, and we're looking forward to it. So, we had to adjust the time for that.
Can I ask you one question on that before I forget? Does that impact the bus route, since the students are on the same schedule as Bartlett?
No, it does not, because right now, we're serving breakfast from 7:20 to, I'm sorry, 7:10 to 7:30. In fact, what we're doing is we're extending it five more minutes. So, the students who traditionally come in at 7:30, say, for example, they wouldn't have a chance to get breakfast. But in their homerooms, they'll have a chance to grab something. So, there's something available.
What time does the bus normally arrive?
Our buses are done by 7:30. We don't have any buses pulling in after 7:30.
Okay.
I have not seen anyone in there. They're very good. Yeah, I don't see buses pulling in at all when I'm outside doing duty out front. I don't see buses coming in after 7:10. It's very unusual.
So, they're allowed to, whenever the bus arrives, I pause, I don't have a student in the middle school. They're allowed to go into the building into their homeroom, or do they go into the cafeteria?
Right now, it's the cafeteria, but now it would be their homeroom area. If a student chooses not to have breakfast, they can stay outside till 7:30, and that's when the bell rings for them to go to homeroom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Again, on page 4, we updated daily schedule to reflect our current schedule of 55 minutes. Page 6, I couldn't even, we just eliminated a lot of information about standards-based. There was rubrics in there and that we had to pull out. And we had to put in information about, I put in a GPA calculation table, just so parents are aware of it, to have that. Page 6, we updated, added the grading system, represents traditional grading practices, the letter grades. Page 6 and 7, I had a bottom, again, the formatting is like I'm always trying to adjust pages to get things to look right. So, my cover page doesn't match up perfectly. We added a promotion retention policy, because we feel that those students need to understand that there are expectations. And so, the promotion retention policy states that if a student fails two core academics, they must go to summer school and pass one. If they fail three or more, they should repeat the grade. Okay? Now, with that being said, that's a big commitment on our school to ensure that students are getting the supports. And what we found this year was, and I'm in for students to achieve and build confidence in themselves and know that there's expectations, as we all have in our lives. And students are afforded many opportunities. This policy practice, I want to say, is going to promote and encourage kids. I can say, we have students right now who are attending some summer programs in Richmond, and you can see a change in them, that they see that this is what they have to do, it's a priority. And some of them come to me and have said to me, "I know what I have to do next year. I made mistakes." And I think that we're still dealing with, I'm going to say this, four 3s, 2s, and 1s, to be honest with you. And a lot of the students I saw towards the third trimester is, I saw a swing where they started to ask questions like, "What are my grades? How am I doing? What do I need to improve?" And because it became reality, one thing I didn't know, I'm sorry I didn't put this in, is that we're going back to quarters. So, we're not going trimesters, we're going back to quarters, and I apologize, I just realized that. And I think that helps, because it now gives the child four quarters. So, we're really changing it from a very, we're making the grade level appropriate. Let's say that much. It's a middle school handbook. And everything was gearing towards their preparation for the high school. So, that's why we use the 65 as a cutoff as passing, because that's what they need to understand, is because that's what's being expected of them at the high school level. I added a homework expectations. Study has shown that students should be doing 10 minutes of homework, 10 minutes of homework per grade level. Um, study has shown that students should be doing ten minutes of homework, um, ten minutes of homework per grade level. So a fifth grader should be doing fifteen minutes of homework a night. So I've added that, it's a guideline, and that'll be presented to my staff. I think that's important, that we understand that, and it could be nately reading. It could be sometimes, it's on average. I think it's important to get them, again, it's preparing them. It's getting them, you know, to, the expectations, the, the academic, um, drive to know what they have to be successful, because it's going to be demanded of them later on. Um, updated after-school academic support. Um, each, this past year, each department had a designated night, where they would spend thirty additional minutes offering after-school support for kids in each, uh, math, ELA, science, social studies, the unified arts. Even the school nurse was there, guidance counselors are there, and it's coordinated so students on a team knows when they can go for extra help. So I designate that in the handbook each year, so that parents are informed, and we utilize that as providing that additional extra support for kids. Parent portal. Information, I think, is crucial, is communication. The parent portal is something that I promote. I think it's one tool for communication, it's not the end-all. I think teachers reaching out to parents and calling them directly is the most powerful message we can give to our students, is that commitment. But I want parents to understand that the grade books will be updated, and what I've always used in the past was ten days. So every ten days, that, the grade book's going to be updated, it's going to be relative, it's going to be current. And that will be presented to my faculty also. Um, honor roll criteria, we had a great response with honor roll, and the ice cream parties, um, students, it's great when you see students start talking about it and saying, like, I always did a survey, I would always say, uh, who, who's, who's this first time for honor roll? And they shake, and they raise their hands, and you can see the numbers growing. And you can see kids talking about it and saying, I want to make it their next quarter, or actually, it's that next trimester. Um, it's going to be more scooping of ice cream, but you know, it's, 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 it's a wonderful thing to get them together to say, I always say this to them, it's our way of simply saying, thank you. Thank you for the hard work, thank you for the dedication. And you, we saw those numbers grow every single trimester. And we also do perfect attendance, because I think that's a, a key role, is the connection between attendance and their success. Toddiness was a significant issue. You cannot learn if you're not coming to school. And we have, we have unfortunately a situation where students were excessively tardy. And I, I want to rule this out right away, it's a policy I've used in the past, and I'm not looking to be punitive, but it's an understanding that you have to be on time. You have to take that as a priority. So what I'm advocating is for five unexcused tardies per quarter. That means a child could be tardy to school twenty days. But if they receive their sixth unexcused tardy, they would have to serve after-school detention. Now, after-school detention is not sitting there writing a book, it is doing homework. I've also used it to go get extra help with a classroom teacher. So it's not like I'm having them, so if they come to me, I always say to a teacher, if you want the child working with you tonight, all you got to do is tell me, and I'll send them upstairs for math, I'll send them upstairs for ELA. So it's, it, but it's, it's holding them accountable, because we have an excessive number of students who come in at eight-thirty, eight-forty-five. It is, I, I'm, it's, it's, it's changing a culture, it's changing expectation, you have to be in school tomorrow. So that's something I am proposing. And I also, the, again, talking about continuity is, we've adopted the same attendance policy protocols that Park Avenue has regarding notification of parents, letters, and visits, because that continuity of, again, there being, that's the expectation at Park Avenue, which should be an expectation we have at the middle school. And so I just, I made that change. Last year, when I came on board, I, I came on too late, and, um, when this, hopefully when this handbook's approved this evening, it has to go to print tomorrow, because it has to go on our, our student agendas tomorrow, so it's like, so tomorrow morning, this will be shipped off to, um, uh, printers to be put in our student agendas. I've done this every year. So I want to, this year I was able to add that policy in the practice. Revised late bus policy, I've learned a lot this year. We want students after school, we want them getting extra help, we want them involved in extracurricular activities. We want them working with our teachers, either could be in a club, or could be getting extra help, or in some cases, some kids playing basketball with a staff member. What we're trying to prevent is the students who are intentionally missing the bus just to hang out. And hang out, and unfortunately, they're not being productive. So what I'm saying is, the late bus pass has to come from a classroom teacher. What they would do is, they would show up in the office, and we'd get swarmed with like twenty of them, and I'd be asking questions like, who'd you stay for? So the staff are going to be giving out the late bus passes, of course. If I got a child in front of me says, I don't, I lost my pass, we're not going to hold the child back. We're not going to do that, okay? But it's, it's, it cannot be that major exit, major promotion of kids. I'll see kids hanging out till three-fifteen, and then they come in for a pass, and then they take the late bus. So I want them using the time productively, okay? If they, if they want to sign a club, that's great. If they want to play basketball with a teacher, that's wonderful. That's what we're trying to promote. Cellphone policy by adding headphones. So interesting conversation about cellphones. My rule of thumb has always been, when I say to students, is if I don't see it, if I don't hear it, I don't have an issue. Very clear. I've always said to my classroom teachers, you can use the cellphones in your classroom as an instructional tool if you permit them, but once they leave your classroom, they're under my jurisdiction. So they can take them out, and they can take pictures of notes in, in the classrooms, but if they, once they leave the classroom, I can't see them. Well, headphones have now become a, a problem where they're, um, they're running headphones up in their clothes, and they're putting earbuds in. And so I, I want to take care of that. One thing I've seen is the students have been wonderful, they really have been wonderful with the cellphones, they really comply with that. And they understand the purpose of it. But I, I really want them to focus on their educations, education. One thing is, is that when we remove the backpacks, it's wonderful seeing kids walk to classes with books and talking about what they're doing, and, and socializing appropriately. We have some, some situations where if we have chronic issues with cellphones, some students would hand the phones in the morning into the office. And I want to share a quick little story, is I'll talk to that student later on, and it's, one young lady said to me, you know, Mr. Ajak, it's so much easier to be in school when I don't have my cellphone. They're actually not distracted by all the communication that they're getting. So it, it's, we are in a way helping them to get away from that distraction. And it was such interesting, because this student was, always had their cellphone on, and they would say to me, you know, again, just talking, you know, they said, it gets, it was easier. And so they, they came in every single morning, handed their cellphone into our, our secretary, and they would pick it up at the end of the day. And that's what the child did, and, because they felt better. So just something that we do, that, to adjust. Again, it's just a revision of things. Again, a lot of the policies were for an elementary, the skipping of a class, they had excessive lateness. We had, they have five minutes to get to a class, in a middle school, they're going from here to here. I mean, really, you know, five minutes, um, it's, it's a nice number. So we, so we had skipping, and there would be, you know, if they skip a class, they get a detention. If they skip it again, they get three nights of detention. So we're trying to get, promote their responsibility to get into class, we're just updating that. Um, unfortunately, we, I did add, um, vapes to the policy, to make sure that we included that, that is a tobacco product. Uh, it is something that unfortunately society is dealing with in, in many schools. So I just wanted to add that to the policy, that they were in possession of it, then we'll be held accountable. Um, page thirty-two has what's called a photo waiver policy. What I do is, in my handbook is, if a parent or guardian does not want their child's name or picture used in any publications, um, they would simply write the prin, the principal a letter. And then I would take that letter, and I would make sure that all the, um, the teachers responsible for the child in the clubs would be aware of that. So they would always, so it's a waiver that they would contact me. I added the notification letter that was asked about. We eliminated the retake policy, and here's the reason why, that is a standards-based, uh, protocol. But I'm going to explain to my staff, I have it starred here, that that's always their prerogative. You're the classroom of records, you can always provide retakes for kids, I encourage that. But what happened, well, there was a, um, an atmosphere where students had the retake policy option, and they were not always coming in prepared. So we want them prepared, but also have the opportunity to come in after school or during the school, if we can work it in, of course, to retake things and make up things. Okay, that will not change. We eliminated the community rules and school-wide, we are rolling into PBIS, that's going to be next year, year two. I met with that committee on July twenty-third, we talked about the rollout, the plan, and that plan will be added to our handbook for next year, but we're still working on the school-wide positive roles. And then I just included dean of students on all the different areas, administration, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the committee? Uh, again, thank you to you and your team, I know there's a lot of work that goes into refining these handbooks every year.
There's a lot of reflection, it really, I think this year, I, I, I said to, uh, Mrs. Gogan just a little while ago, I said, boy, it's a lot different coming into second year. Even though I have years of experience in administration, coming into a new district, uh, last year was, um, last year, coming in not knowing the procedures, it's a lot different this year. I'm, I'm really excited, I'm excited for the things that are rolling out for next year, I'm excited for the new supports, new programs. I'm really excited about the schedule, um, because that's something that's truly dear to me, is that, is how that whole thing puts together. So we just fin, finalized it today, and so I'm looking forward to it.
Good. Uh, hearing no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the Webster Middle School Handbook.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is approval of Park Avenue Elementary School Handbook, and we save the best for last, correct? Good evening, Mrs. Parmley and Mrs. Mackay.
Good evening. Um, I had the opportunity to collaborate with Mrs. Parmley, um, over the phone, um, making sure that she was aware of what our handbook was, and, uh, we were able to, to talk about some, some wording changes here and there. So with that, um, I'll try to be brief with our, uh, with our update. I will say that I am really looking forward to the collaboration between the three schools and listening to the differences that we have in cellphone policies, because we have a cellphone policy, and you have a cellphone policy, and you have a cellphone policy. Um, and I don't think that we've ever sat down and talked about, like, what are the common places of the, the student handbooks across the three schools. Um, so I think that that will be a good discussion for us for, for the future. As far as this handbook goes, uh, the dates, the current staffing, the page numbers were all updated throughout the handbook. Minor additions of punctuation and fixing formatting also occurred, that we didn't catch last year. Um, not included in the, in this handbook are picture days, um, and dates of when report cards will go out, um, because we hadn't had, we hadn't had that discussion yet, because Mrs. Parmley is not yet, not yet fully here.
She's not really here.
Almost, counting the hours. Staff changes were updated, and we know that this section will continue to be updated as additional staff changes will occur during the remainder of the summer. District calendar will be sent home with welcome letters, and again, that's a major formatting issue between Excel and Google. Um, so that was very difficult to do in the past. Other changes include, on page two, um, we updated the channels for snow announcements. Page five, the welcome letter was updated, uh, Mrs. Parmley, um, was able to, uh, to update the letter. On page nine, we added, um, and here's a, a quick mistake that I found, and, and this draft was created before the time changes were announced. And so I tried very quickly, before I had to hand it in, to catch that eight-forty-five to eight-thirty-five for Park Ave. So students that are dropped off after, it should say eight-thirty-five, not eight-forty-five AM, must be accompanied into the building by an adult. And what we find, um, at Park Ave, given our age, the age of our students, is that some students who are late are dropped off outside, and then ring the buzzer to be let in. And it's imperative that young children be accompanied by adults into the building. So we really wanted to be explicit with that, um, in the handbook. On page ten, um, it's been updated that if a parent or guardian is late for pickup more than three times, that they may lose bus privileges. So this is if a student is returned to the school, um, and no one's been at the bus stop, or no one has come to pick them up, um, upstairs in the car line, that they may, they may lose bus privileges, um, not permanently, but, um, as a consequence, and be asked, or to be asked to find another way to dismiss the child. And if the child is returned from the bus, um, or they are late for pickup more than three times, that the child would be sent to the after-school program, because currently, they sit in the office, um, and it could be, like, on the half-days, we sometimes have twenty, upwards of twenty-plus students that are returned on the half-day, because people forget that we have a half-day. And so it turns that time very chaotic for the office, trying to reach people, waiting sometimes two, three hours for people to come, um, to pick up their students. So the change is that they'll be, um, sent to the after-school program, and would then be asked to, to pay for the, for the service of the after-school, um, daycare. Page ten to eleven, uh, deleted the sentence from page two. If for unexpected reasons you need to see your child during the school day, please come to the office and we will assist you. Um, those are like very, very rare occasions, but, um, like, parents just don't come and say, oh, I need to come see my child, or can I go visit my child in their, in their classroom, just to say hello, because that's disruptive to the day. If there are cer, certain circumstances, they can just call us, but we just wanted to take that sentence out. On page twelve, paragraph four, um, that's regarding attendance. Um, it should say, discuss with the family after five, um, and not necessarily meet with the family after five absences, so that it's consistent with the universal attendance interventions listed below that section. Um, just making sure that the wording matches, um, in the two, in the two sections. On page thirteen, um, in the vacation section, we eliminated that teachers would provide extra work. Um, the, the premise is that there's a vacation journal, if, um, that, that all students will, will have access to, and a journal is like a little examination booklet that they can send home and keep a journal of, um, of their vacation. So it's not anything formal. So, uh, that section needs to be updated. On page fifteen, we updated the admin building address in the third paragraph. Page sixteen, we deleted the last sentence, if the breakfast in the classroom. Previously, it stated that big food could be brought home at the end of the day. And there's, as we learned yesterday, there's a little bit of, you know, it's a little gray, and so we didn't want it to be so set in stone, listed in the handbook, which is the rule. Um, so we just left that, uh, leftover food, we placed on the classroom shared tables, so students have access to the food. And then we deleted the snack, we deleted the sentence that eliminated snack for grades one and four, because we've updated the, um, snack policy. On page seventeen, we updated the language, uh, for PBIS, uh, in the paragraph to reflect systems of recognition in the classroom and school-wide, uh, recognition. The previous language, I don't think, had been updated in a few years, and it was very reflective of punitive measures, um, even within PB, PBIS. So even as I was reading it, I was like, I can't believe we wrote that, because it's all about positive, um, and consequences, but not just consequences, but, so we, I updated it to reflect the positive things that come with PBIS. On page eighteen, at the end of the first paragraph, um, placement letters will be sent home. It said mid-August, um, it's, it's not by August for us, so it's, like, placement letters will be sent home, they're actually being stuffed tomorrow, so they're ready to be sent home as of August first, so not by August first. And under the school-wide behavior expectations, the first bullet added detention. Um, page twenty-one, the second paragraph, um, we ask parents to pay attention to when PE classes are regarding appropriate shoes, because many students come to school regardless of what day it is, of phys ed or not, with flip-flops or shoes that really aren't safe for physical activity. Um, and sometimes, you know, we would even, we, it even says in there, like, if they're playing outside in the climbing structures, uh, flip-flops aren't really the safest things to be wearing. Page twenty-six, in the fourth paragraph, um, this year, the PTO is providing the following. All students will receive a Park Ave folder, kindergarten students are receiving a writing journal, and students in grades one through four will receive a composition book, so thank you to our PTO for that. Page twenty-seven, on, um, internet use, um, in the second paragraph, we reworded, we have tablets and Chromebooks to reflects, to reflect the changes in the specific devices at Park Ave. Page twenty-nine, we added including social media to photographing and video recording. And I, I also changed the word from videotaping to video recording, because not sure how many people have tapes anymore.
It's kind of like the Walkman.
It's like the Walkman, yeah. Um, on page thirty, open house, uh, will... On page 30, open house will, in the placement letters, will have information about open house, but our open house will be on 9/20 from 5:30 to 7:00. Changed the report card information to reflect trimesters rather than quarters. Again, this is another area that I think district collaboration would be useful because now we, now that they're going back to quarters, now we have trimesters and we had trimesters and they had trimesters. So I think that this is an area for us to continue talking about. But the previous handbook said quarters, and then we went to trimesters. So I reflected it for trimesters. Page 31, in the security section, the first paragraph added, "After, please press the buzzer, identify yourself, and state the reason for your visit," and eliminated, "And the office will let you in after you press the buzzer." Because we ask, "May I help you?" And they have to identify themselves and state the reason for their visit before we let them in. Page 34, removed the heading for PM bus transportation and added the subheading of bus conduct. Page 36, eliminated recess supervision volunteers to reflect the hiring of the lunch and recess monitors last year. And on page 43, we added the AHERA notification page as was requested by the district.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mrs. Gogan.
I just have questions. On page... Bottom of the page, Dilmer.
Okay.
Mrs. Gogan, you're talking to microphones. So I can get all that.
Patty, just on page 15, in the bottom, do you see that?
Yep, I circled it.
And then I have, actually, I do have two questions. Why don't you just go to quarters?
We can. I just would feel, I don't know. It's up for, is it up for discussion? Because I don't know that we would just want to tell the staff, "We're back to quarters after one year," without having the staff's input. We've really worked hard to increase the staff voices this year. And I'm not saying that that's a no, but I think that it would be important to have a discussion at the school with the staff. But I see, I mean, I see the need for the consistency. It's just...
Then Monique has one question.
I was just curious, on page 30, "Other security measures include locking classroom doors after school and locking the front door at 5:00. Doors locked all day at all times?"
Yeah, I think that that was probably there for a few years. Okay, we can change that.
Do you mind if I just speak for a quick second? I just want to take a moment to really thank Mrs. Mackay. She has done the lion's share, and she has done a tremendous job holding down the fort, staying in touch with me, communicating. She has really just been phenomenal, and we're just very, very lucky to have her and her leadership at Park Avenue. So thank you very much and all the work you've done.
I just want to add to that. Mrs. Mackay has been the acting principal since May and has really led the staff through what could have been a tumultuous time. She's kept the yacht sailing in the right direction. She has not had to use any life jackets, and she has received great recognition from the teachers at the school. They have certainly been very grateful for all of your leadership, and you've made this transition wonderful, Patty. So I know that I tell you that every time I see you, but publicly, I want everyone to know that you really rose to the occasion and did a phenomenal job. Thank you.
And there's a huge bonus, I think, part of that.
There is.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Mr. Chair, I just had one question. Is it necessary to have a section regarding vacations in the handbook because, you know, the statement, "If a vacation during school time is necessary," really, is it ever necessary? Necessary?
Part of the hesitation of removing entire sections was because of the situation that, you know, this tender situation that we're in in between leadership. And so maybe having some time to really take a look at the entirety of the document with a more, you know, laser focus and to think about, what doesn't even need to be in here? Is it overdone? So I appreciate the comment.
Definitely. And, you know, we were doing this over the phone and going through it very carefully. So I think being able to have those professional conversations and be able to really take the time will be able to really refine definitely for next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a question about, I understand that the, there's an issue with regard to parents being where they need to be to retrieve their children from the bus stop. But I wonder about taking away bus privileges for elementary school children. If the parents are not being, and forgive me, but if they're not responsible for getting their children off the bus when they need to, are we punishing the children and not allowing them to attend school if we take away the bus privileges?
So this is kind of a tricky area because we definitely are not trying to penalize the children, but we are asking the parents to be accountable. As you know, the buses cannot release children if there's nobody to receive them. So if we have 20 or 30 students now within the office, I'm sure that is a bit chaotic in being able to locate. So I think part of this would have to be strong and clear communication with families from the get-go and be able to explain to them that we're not there to penalize, however, we need them to be accountable because the safety of the children, especially at this younger age, is so important. So definitely, I believe some of this will be a learning curve for us as we move forward to see how the community responds, but also to see if the folks are able to step up and to be there to receive their children. I can tell you have some concerns, so go ahead. By all means.
I'm a parent that, I'm only at the bus stop once a week because I have a babysitter and whoever else is getting my children. But there's, I watch a little girl ride that bus back to school almost every Monday that I'm there, and I just have a feeling that, you know, there are kids out there that are not being remembered and are probably not going to get there when they need to.
I'm wondering if we could somehow compromise and put something in there about, on a case-to-case basis, based on family dynamics?
May is not as strong. It still evades that level of urgency. You know, I just worry about whether or not kids...
And I agree with you. I think we definitely need to kind of find a middle line there, be able to support all families. So thank you, thank you very much for the observation.
Any other... Would you feel, well, would you agree with some kind, again, similar language and the discretion of the principal or his or her designee? Something like that.
Yeah, or even just, I don't know, having the children, after the third time, they go to the after-school program and the parents start having a bill. You know, I mean, at least then, it's all, it sounds like the core issue is having 20 students in the office in the afternoon. The students' time isn't being, you know, put to good use, and the office staff is now needing to watch 20 kids, right? So by putting them into the after-school program, it creates a burden for the after-school program if they can withstand having an additional 20 people there. It solves the problem of having the kids in the office. The kids are still getting back and forth to school, you know, and they're being, the parents are being penalized, which is where it really should be.
In thinking about who lost bus privileges last year, no one ever lost bus privileges for coming back and, for coming back to the school. So again, in thinking about this becoming the law, this becoming the, you know, the rule of the school, if we're not going to do that, then it shouldn't be in there.
So do you, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, "Take it out."
We'll take out that section.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Again, thank you for all your efforts, especially Patty. And I will entertain a motion to approve the Park Avenue Elementary School handbook with the amendments as presented this evening.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is approval of employee handbook. Mrs. Gogan.
Thank you. I will be brief. The employee handbook has been updated with some minor changes, as you can see in the list that you have in front of you. And I'm happy to answer any questions on them.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the employee handbook as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is surplus items. Mrs. Perangeli is requesting that we approve the list of items as surplus. Did you want to add anything else, Mrs. Perangeli?
I do. There is one last-minute item I would like to add to the list, if you don't mind. It is a fax brother, until I'll fax 4100E. That is the additional item. Everything else is good.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to move to declare the attached list of items as obsolete and to direct the business manager to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle/dispose of these materials in conjunction with provision of Mass General Law 30B.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Schenover and Mrs. Siddiqui, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Pull the committee, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of change in school hours for Park Avenue Elementary School. Mrs. Gogan.
Hello again. You, in essence, have approved, through the ratification of the WEA contract, an additional time on learning for our students, the availability of additional time on learning. And if you recall, last year, we increased the students' day by 10 minutes. This year, we're asking for an official vote to have the official start time for the elementary school start at 8:35 and end at 3:05. With our negotiations with our teachers, all teachers across the district will be working seven hours and five minutes. So that provides us extra time for learning, which is wonderful. So I am asking the school committee to officially approve the students' day from 8:35 to 3:05 for Park Avenue Elementary School.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So is breakfast in the classroom that starts at 8:20?
Breakfast? Breakfast will start at, well, the teachers are in the building at 8:20 at Park Ave, so the kids can go right up into the classroom. So they can start breakfast then, or they can come in at 8:35 and still have breakfast. So breakfast is available in all of the classrooms. So there's no, like, if you come in at 8:20, it's a grab and go.
And this might be an obvious answer. Will the bus pickup time change because of this?
Yes. No. No, 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 it won't. It won't because they were coming that early to begin with.
And they were just sitting on the bus?
They were, they were sitting in the cafeteria.
In the cafeteria. So we're trying to maximize every minute for learning. So they were coming and going, and some kids were going into the library, some kids were going into the cafeteria, and then waiting until the teachers were in the classroom. So now that we've ratified the contract, the teachers will be working longer, especially at Park Ave Elementary. So the teacher's workday will be 8:20 to 3:25. And students can, are going to get off the bus at 8:20, and they can start breakfast as soon as they're in their classrooms. Now they can just go right into their classrooms. I think that's going to help.
Any other questions or comments?
Actually, just a question. So when we're dropping our children off at school, what does that mean for parents who are dropping off? Is 8:20 is when they can go into the building?
Yes.
Oh, nice. And that's what it is now.
Yep.
I feel like it was 8:30.
It was 8:30. The teacher's day was 8:30 to 3:15. And now the teacher's day is going to be 8:20 to 3:25. The students' day was 8:45 to 2:55. And now it's going to be 8:35 to 3:05. And so communication to parents needs to get out there, and they will be doing that at Park Ave Elementary School. But I wanted you to officially vote on that change of time for the kids. I'm really pleased, over the last two years, that we've been able to find more time on learning at the elementary school and, as you know, at the middle school as well. So all good.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to change the time of school to 8:35 a.m. to 3:05 p.m. at Park Ave.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Abstain. The next item on the agenda is review transfer signing of bills, payrolls, and vouchers. We do have a couple transfer requests. I will entertain a motion to transfer $952.88 from the Park Ave Elementary Student Activity Savings Account to the checking account.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is, I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer request from the Webster Middle School in the amount of $7,635.43 from the Student Activity Savings Account to the checking account.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. And next item, I will entertain a motion to transfer $21,554.79 from the Bartlett High School Student Activity Savings Account to checking account.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Abstain. So for clarification, the June warrant I signed as the designee and part of our protocol is that the warrant is presented at the next meeting and signed by all the members. Is that correct? Oh, we had it in our packet, that's why.
Hand over. But the originals, after they...
So we're not signing it tonight?
No.
Okay.
It was for review, I thought.
Okay. Any questions regarding the June warrant? Okay. Okay.
I'm not even going to fake it tonight. I'm not going to use it. Didn't give you a charger?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Schenover.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Just a quick reminder, again, in August, we will only be meeting on the fourth Tuesday of the month, which will be August 28th. We will not be meeting on the second Tuesday of the month. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned.